Ten o'clock and we're to call the meeting. The order, everyone please rise and make a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, relatively long agenda today, so try to keep things moving along as quickly as possible. Start with our consent agenda, a few items for housekeeping here. First is the November eighteenth regular meetings. I'm going to request that those be removed because they have not been completed yet. And also, I would like to remove for individual discussion, the joint court's request for forty-four hundred dollars for furniture fixtures. Is there any other member that would like?
Me or Pauline?
Pauline? Is there any other member that would like any line item pulled? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
Motion by Paul Ryder, second. Seconded by Ethan Brown. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Just to state for the record, all seven members are in attendance today. So, the item pulled was for joint courts transfer for furniture fixtures worth four hundred dollars. Anybody have any additional information or would like to make any?
I will say that he was trying to get down here. He went back up, he came down at nine and talked to me about a couple of other things, but he said he would come back down as soon as he could.
Okay, so I will just leave that open for I being able to move on to our regular agenda.
Josh, am I wrong to suggest that he's been down here previously to discuss that with us?
He was, at the last meeting, we would ask for additional for tail because it was pretty vague in terms of what, I mean, he was asking for forty-four hundred dollars for chairs by the desk essentially. But there was also courthouse chair, maybe some jury chairs, and there was no break down.
Probation chair.
Yeah, there was a number of things there. I mean, we didn't know if there were by four thousand dollar chairs or forty hundred dollars.
Didn't also know if they were already here or not.
Exactly, thank you.
Fair enough, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so to review the financial reports, I'll be brief today because we have a lot to cover. Our revenue receipts are about thirty thousand dollars ahead of last year and budgetary expenditures are on par with where we are in the year. So, good news there. Are there any individual reports to share?
No.
Yep, okay, so we'll move on to, and I'm sure we'll spend more time in January when all the settlement is done and have more details for where we end of the year in terms of the financial report. Move to the auditor's report.
Does anybody have any questions on the reports that I emailed you, the monthly comparison, monthly financial? The monthly comparison does balance with the treasure. All of them balanced with the treasure. And the revenue and expenditure comparison report, is there any questions on that? Okay, and then the salary ordinance, we have, I sent you an updated and Tracy said she might have something that needs directed.
I just got one, me and the auditor, you have forty-eight two hundred and I have forty-eight two-two-oh.
Two-two-oh?
Yeah.
Can I check that?
Here's the book.
Yep, it does say two-two-oh. Yeah, I will fix that. Thank you for the key.
That's all.
Okay, so I would ask for it to be.
We need to do that too. So, a motion to approve it with the amendment of the auditor to the number.
Oh my gosh.
Motion by Tracy Martin, seconded by Dr. Stocker, and that motion is to approve the salary ordinance with the change of the auditor's salary to forty-eight two-two-zero. You need to print the document and signature.
I think the last page, it came out just right, but you just have your signatures on the back that I put on the top that it was for that ordinance, just don't want to get mixed up with anybody or anything else.
Okay, so I have a motion and second to approve the auditor, or approve the salary ordinance with the condition of the, or with the correction of the auditor being at forty-eight two-two-zero. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Oh, excuse me. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
We had some area plan board members that was here to talk about the salary of the ministry assistant down there. We told them not to be on the, on the agenda because we would discuss it during the salary ordinance adoption.
It was, I gotta explain a little bit, it was a really late request also, and with the agenda had been done, and I did tell Sandy, or one of my girls told Sandy that she could discuss it during the salary ordinance, because you also have the highway that has been on there, so I didn't know whether you could, I don't know, it was on the agenda for the highway, so also. But it was not on for area. Still talking about it.
So, do you want to do both of them have enough presentation?
It's up to you, I, I did tell him, and he did have his hand up when you guys were loading.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, let's finish the audit report.
Well, okay, there are in the salary ordinance, next year, it'd be kind of nice, and I know you don't like to do that, is to decide what they're going to get paid and then multiply it out, because there's some that are like two dollars off or whatever, they're going to have to do a little transfer at the end. I think everything, some of them have a little bit more, so it'll work it, it works itself out, but we might just think about that. I don't, just a suggestion. Next thing, I gotta get down to where my stuff is, I'm sorry. The seventeen eighty-two notice, I have a copy in front of you, that means our budget has been approved.
Can you skip one?
Yeah, I know, I don't have my paper right here. Do you want me to go in order?
No, no, I can.
Okay. Anyway, seventeen eighty-two notice has been sent in, was sent in on December seventh with the approval from Jackie and from Josh and myself, and it was checked, no changes made. The comment notice is from Deb Lowe from the Carroll County Comment, they want to know all of our meetings and everything. I just wanted to make sure you guys did know that, so anytime that we have a meeting, we have to let them have forty-eight hours notice. It's a standard.
You just want to just go ahead and make the motion to approve these?
And, yeah, and then I made up a, but I didn't know whether you're going to continue the third meeting, Thursday's of the month. So, that's what that is based on.
So, we don't have any new members, so we could go ahead and take this on right now. The, this, you can all have a copy of this meeting schedule for next year, that would be the same time and location and allow Beth to get that advertised for our January meeting. Uh, we would need a motion to approve this.
Go ahead.
Second. Okay, so this is a motion by Paul Ryder, seconded by Ethan Brown to adopt the twenty-two meeting schedule as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? Anybody have any schedule conflicts or any issues with that time? All right, so, I'll vote, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Then, like always, I'd like to have permission to transfer for year end, you guys meet here, claims written on the thirteenth, we all, some of them do not know if they've got, they should, but some of them do not know if they have enough money for the end of the year. I do know there's one for ten cents, I told them not to file it, but I would, surely could do that. And if it is bigger than, you always give me, I think, two hundred dollars, if it is bigger than that, I can call Josh and ask him. Or if it's within the categories, I know that you have an ordinance and I did find that, didn't find anything on that, additional, which I would like to explain, the paper said I was talking about transfers and I was really talking about additional in the comment. But.
We need a motion to first, to give her permission to, traditionally the number is at two hundred dollars. It's on your motion, okay.
Do you have money?
Well, it's two hundred dollars, say somebody comes in and needs to transfer a hundred and fifty, I can transfer it within their budget without. I, I don't know, Doc, I mean, it always has been in the past, but if it, like I said, if it's bigger, I can call Josh and Tim and get a couple people to agree.
So, motion.
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Paul Ryder, I need a second. Seconded by Ethan Brown, is to give the auditor authority to transfer up two hundred dollars for departments at the end of the year. Between now and the end of the year. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
So, I will, I will just call, if I get something, I'll just call. Or if we do a year-end meeting, that would be okay, but it's going to be, you need to have it soon because it'd be too late.
It'd be too late if you have it on the third.
Yes, way too late. We need to print checks and have them ready to go on the third year and for the commissioners to approve them. So, I would suggest maybe, maybe stay in the body for the twenty-second. Or the twenty-seventh.
Anybody have any problem?
This has been stated, given you permission.
No.
Just anything above two hundred dollars, or if anything else would come up that needs to be done by the end of the year, I would call it year-end.
Just a special. It's just, it's just in case.
Yeah, just in case.
There may not even be the need for meetings, so you post it, then you cancel.
Right, but especially meaning you need to have something, so I'll just put year-end.
Twenty-seventh, anybody have a problem with twenty-seventh? So, just do ten again. So, oh well, so we'll have a, we'll advertise a special meeting for the twenty-seventh times you need it, we'll use it if not.
I have one, I think a couple more things, the, there's a home detention coordinator job description in front of you. Normally, we fill before the commissioners and then to you, there's three others that's going to be commissioners on Monday and then back to you. That is something to do on the twenty-seventh, because she really wants them done, I know where she at. She would really like to have them done, but this one is just a name change, or a department change, from the probation to community probation, the crossings, and she already had, we already have somebody hired, so it'd be January one start date. So, that's the only thing that needs to be changed on this, so I kind of want to go to you first and then go back to the commissioners, because it doesn't have anything to do with any of, anything.
So, there's no, so there's no requested salary change or job description change, it's just the department.
The salary has already been done in our salary ordinance.
Right, so no changes are being requested, it's just, the only thing that's, there's just the department.
The only thing changed on here is the, which department?
It's an updated job description to show that it's moved to the different department.
Right, that's the only thing that's changed.
But the duties haven't changed.
The duties have been updated because the warrant was probably four years old, so it's.
So, it has been changed?
Well, it's been, yeah, I mean, well, updated, I don't know.
That's the same thing, so. This needs to go before the commissioners first, sorry, I, I was told it was just the department head, or the department. So, they need to do that on Monday and then maybe we could do these on the twenty-seventh?
Anything else, Beth?
Don't believe, I have encumbrance to add, but I can do that when you get there.
I'm going to change the order here a little bit, we have a couple folks that need to leave today that are relevant to the edit conversation, so I'll move to edit. But proposed budget from commissioners.
Quick on that, paper that you were passed out, I changed it to, for the Carroll County Chamber, to sixty-seven-five because that's what the contract said. I talked to Julia and it really was supposed to be sixty-two-five. Sixty-two-five is what the commissioners did approve, so, I mean, they didn't approve the sixty-seven, so if you cross that out, that's sixty-two-five. I changed it just in case.
Sixty-two thousand five hundred.
Because that's what was advertised, and you can go down, you can't go up, so.
Okay, so we, last few years, we have just handled these line by line, so let's just, if somebody can just make a motion to approve each individual line as they come up, then we can debate them on our individual merit.
Motion to move Carroll County Parks three thousand.
Motion by Paul Ryder, seconded by Scott Ayers. I'll say again, I, this came up last month, I fully support putting this three thousand dollars in. I think that edit is, is not the appropriate place to do this, I think that we have more than enough money to do this out of county general, and I would support that, but I just think that taking out that edit is supposed to be, you know, strictly for, or this body has taken it as we use that for economic development, that this isn't that for this situation. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, aye, motion carries. Is that six-one? Six-one, thank you.
Who voted aye?
I voted aye. Next item is senior family services.
Motion to accept the three thousand dollars for twenty-two to edit.
Motion by Paul Ryder, seconded, seconded by Ethan Brown, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next item is the Chamber of Commerce. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ethan Brown.
Second.
Seconded, is that you, Tim?
Yeah.
Seconded by Tim Radcliffe. Is there any discussion?
It's sixty-two-five.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Motion over sixty-two-five.
Thank, thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Carroll County Highway.
Did everybody vote?
I, it was no.
Seven-oh.
Seven-oh.
No, I can keep up. His mouth did not move, I'm telling you.
It could be areas with a series of parents. Carroll County Highway.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ethan Brown, seconded by Paul Ryder. For the last, I'm going to say three years, we have not appropriated this money. For the last many, many years, this money hasn't been needed to, to do the budget process. Kent is here today, and I think this is, this is, this is a great example, Kent has requested, for Kent, it's in the process of doing, and we all voted for in the budget, to spend highway dollars and edit dollars to do a major road project. And so, that is an example of what, why we did this, so over the last, let's say, three or four years, we've put away two hundred or fifty thousand dollars, that leaves that eight hundred thousand dollars available, I'm just going to use round numbers, say it's eight hundred thousand dollars available for Kent to use at his discretion when we have a major road project, and that's what he's identifying here. So, from my perspective, I don't think that it's appropriate to do this right now, because regardless, if he needs that money this year, it's probably in all likelihood going to be more than this, so I think that we should just handle that when it comes up at that time. But I'm really proud of the council for how they've been studious on this, and, but, 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 but those monies back so that when a major initiative could be taken, that Kent's taken the initiative and executed on that, so. That's why you set some of that. Is there any further discussion?
So, will it be appropriated out of edit into Carroll County Highway, or just leave it in edit?
Well, I, I would leave it in edit until we know when and how it's going to be spent for that project specifically.
And then addressed.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those, and, so the motion on the floor was to approve it, so if you wanted to wait till, till later date, you'd have to vote nay.
I'll rescind our motion.
Okay, so I have a, Council of Brown has rescinded, is there anybody that wants to make a motion to approve the two hundred thousand? Seeing none, we'll move on. Burlington Festival for three thousand dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Ethan Brown.
Second.
Seconded by Paul Ryder. Julia, are you there?
I am.
My only question about this was, your budget has the grants included in it, correct?
Yes.
So, would this be an example of, can you please come to the podium, state your name for the record?
State my name in the microphone.
Thank you.
Julia Laney, Carroll County Chamber.
So, this is an example of what could be a grant.
It could be, yes, so the way we had the grant set up this year was fifteen thousand total, and each application, each applicant could have requested up to a thousand dollars, and that has been, we're still gathering the data from everybody that's been using those funds. Sounds like it's been a big success so far, so Burlington has never applied, I mean, I put it before them, same way we lost a couple of others. But it could, yes, it could certainly apply, but I don't think anybody would review that. Is there any monies left over that are still being spent? Only about two hundred fifty dollars, yes, providing it all reporting before the end of this year, that's what we stand on while we're preparing this year, so, still waiting on.
So, from Burlington, we'll get a thousand, or they get three?
Well, according to the grant program as it was written for this year, they would get a thousand through our, through this grant program.
That's what it was written.
Yes.
If they apply, which they did.
If they applied, which they did not. Correct, which they possibly didn't apply because they, we still hope they gave the edit funds, but I'd be kind of agreeing with Josh, this is why we invented this program, and that's what it's for now, even though they can't get the three thousand, they would still be possibly granted a thousand.
Unless they write it in.
It's possible.
I, I'm in favor of this money getting to Burlington, I just think that I've always not liked when we do, we do it ad hoc and Delphi, this year gets three thousand, and Burlington gets three thousand, there should be a bucket of money there that we spend on this collectively, and for the last year, we decided that the most efficient way to do that was to have the chamber administer this. So, I mean, just my impression that it would be better if this money went into that grant system versus granting us deciding that they deserve the three thousand dollars personally.
So, go nay if you feel the same way.
Aye, yeah.
How do you decide the grant, how much grant money do you have to give out? Per individual, or per your total amount? Well, the way the contract is written is you would send, say, fifteen thousand in the edit funds collectively for tourism grants, and that is how it is approved by the commissioners when we put our break down, so right now, we're locked in at fifteen for next year.
According to what they just approved.
According to what they approved, yes. So, if you're going to use that program, then it would be up to her to go back to the commissioners and say, you know, you need to raise that up because we're getting more and more festivals that are wanting money.
Right, and I think that's the more appropriate thing is to say, you know, if we, if this, if this was voted down, then you could go back to the commissioners and say, council didn't approve this three thousand just for Burlington, but we would like to go into grant.
And we could certainly do the same thing for old settlers.
Exactly.
For other events, and that's.
And, and I hate to do that right now, because, I mean, old settlers is kind of a challenging, just because of where that organization is
The city has taken that over officially, so.
Right, but, I mean, they're not, like, ready, so, I mean, that's all they kind of front row, you know.
The city of Delphi, so of course they have their own edit funding, they can utilize.
So.
I guess I found out that they're going against Burlington, since I have nothing against Burlington.
Yeah.
They got canned, and we got held by.
Exactly.
Floor hasn't asked yet, and they do a lot of, which they've utilized a lot of these this year.
And I, and I want to commend Burlington, they did a tremendous job, tremendous job on the Fall Festival, I mean, it was amazing.
And we did grant the money for their Burlington Christmas Walk, so I'm waiting on the numbers to see how well that made, because it sounded like it was a, a big event, so. That's what I'm saying, if this grant program possibly is going to grow, because, I mean, you're going to have more and more coming to the chamber, because that's what the program was intended for, so it's going to be up to you to go to the commissioners and say, look, our program is growing, we're not being able to reach each people, you know, or each organization to where you might have to find within your funds.
Why they didn't get their edit money, and you know that way it will help you.
I would make a motion, I guess we don't do that.
Your motion is on the floor, do you want to keep your motion?
I'll keep my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, like, same thing as last one, if you want, if you want to, the motion is to approve, so we would get three thousand for Burlington, if you would like something else, then you would have to vote. So, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, second.
Yeah, there was seconded by Paul Ryder. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
I have one affirmative, those opposed, aye, six in the negative. Last one is Economic Development Corporation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'm going to call that a tie. I'll, I'll call that Ethan Brown, is there a second?
Sure.
Second by Paul Ryder. Okay, is there any discussion on the appropriation for the EK now?
Both the Commerce and the Economic are both contracts.
Yeah. All right, so any discussion? All right, um, so you can do a discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, motion carries. Very good, okay, so, um...
Seven to zero, right?
Seven, yeah. Okay, so now, go back...
Both of you will get them signed in on Monday.
Okay, good.
It's from the RDC, MOUs, separate issue, RDC. Okay, so we have two people now, I didn't, the judge isn't here yet?
Nope.
So first is, I guess we'll hear the APC and first, of the salary ordinance.
Good morning. My name is Brad Farr, I am the president of the Area Planning Commission. I am here in, replacing Cameron, who had back surgery on Tuesday. Here to request the sixteen sixty an hour for Gloria Mills in the area plan office. Uh, this has been requested before. Gloria has actually stayed with the Area Planning Commission through the transition from Doug to Cameron. Not many people, employees, would do that, in today's world, in my opinion. She also helped train Cameron, and she has helped with the office. One thing that we are seeing quite a bit of in the Area Planning Commission is, banks are actually doing their due diligence on title work. So that means we have to do a lot of rezones, a lot of places that were residences, that were zoned business, or some other odd zoning, we have to change that back. Well, those are fees that we are incurring in addition to other rezon requests, so therefore, we're actually increasing our fee income. You also have the Delphi Redevelopment Commission, you also have the various, our, our shift districts are gonna be starting up, this Delphi has signed a membrane, an MOU, and then Carroll's done that, so we got a lot of development going on, especially with the recent selling of the burn break farm out there, and that's gonna get developed, so you're gonna have a lot more zoning going on. So you need a, need a very competent employee to help with that work that's gonna be done for rezoning. And Gloria is more than competent to do that job and do that rezoning. She's been a perfect employee for the county, represents the county extremely well when people come in there for what they do. My colleague that worked at, worked out there, he recently built a new house, and he sang the praises of Gloria on how she was very helpful when he built his house to do all the permitting and all the process, and everything like that, so, I've gotten the feedback from people that have dealt with Gloria, I have seen what Gloria does firsthand. We have a lot of rezones going through that office, we have an employee that is, that does an excellent job. I think we should reward that employee with the pay raise up to sixteen sixty an hour, and we should send that message that if you do your job, and you're very good at what you do, that will send a good message throughout the entire courthouse, in my opinion. So therefore, with Gloria doing what she does for the Area Planning Commission, I think we need to reward an employee, because we have a good, we have a good team down there, we have a good board. Sandy's a board member, Donnie's a board member. We have a really good board, Area Planning Commission board, we really do. And we actually have a good leader in Cameron, we have a good administrative assistant with Gloria. There was a lot of turmoil with the transition before Cameron and Gloria came on board. I think we need to keep that team together, and I think this is part of keeping that team together by rewarding Gloria with the pay raises.
Well, I work in title insurance, I'm, I'm on the Area Plan Board, I am on the Delphi Redevelopment Commission, I'm also a, on the Delphi City Council. If we can't work with area plan, all of these jobs I do are working with area plan. We've gotta keep good people, and one of the worst things you can do is lose a good person and have all of that just be down the drain. She's gonna be so busy with the rezoning and with, I mean, as these things get developed, we're gonna have people that wanna come in and build houses, and, and we need going comforting people to work with all of these other entities. We can't lose her, and don't want to lose her over a spittle of dollars an hour.
The fee, the fee income that we will be, that we have accrued over the past year, eighteen months, plus the fee income from rezoning and other ones, are going more than paid for per salary increase. And we're, we're self-funded office anyways, with all the zoning fees and everything else, and ordinance fees.
Correct, you're not a self-funded office, you take...
We take, yeah, we take cuts, but we also get a lot of fee in.
Right, right, not entirely.
Not entirely, but I'm just pointing out that...
You do bring revenue.
We do bring in revenue, and our revenue has increased. So, the small increase in pay is gonna be covered by the fee.
Brad, I wanna, I'm sorry, Tracy. I, I just wanna specify, and I appreciate you coming in and bringing your case to this body. Uh, the reality is, we pay based off of a salary ordinance that specifies a position and a job description. If, heaven forbid, Gloria wouldn't be able to, or decides not to come in on Monday to report the work, the salary ordinance still specifies whatever rate we give it per hour.
We changed her, we changed her job description.
So we don't pay...
Her job, her, her job description has changed.
Can I finish?
Her job description has changed.
Can I finish? I appreciate that, but the reality is, we don't pay based on an employee, or how great of a person they are, or what they did eight, ten, sixteen months ago. We pay based on a job description that we have, which is up to date, which we have reviewed, and we have decided through the budgetary process, and different discussions with the council, and Cameron himself, that the current rate is appropriate. I appreciate what you're saying.
Fully disagree, Tim, fully disagree. Because she's, she's...
You're disagreeing on the process that this board goes through to pay?
I'm saying that there's, there's loopholes for everything. I'm saying that we have a very good employee that does a good job at her job, we've increased her job description.
That's fair.
And I'm saying that it's a very minuscule amount that we're asking for.
And I'm not arguing that point, but I'm trying to...
And if, if she doesn't show up, we can always go back, and you guys can make a change back to where it should be. I'm asking for a cert, just a miniscule pay increase for an employee that does a very good job for our office.
And I'm, to restate, the process that we go through to pay employees of the council.
And this has been debated, and like, you're, I think this is the third time that it's been debated, after the salary ordinance, after the budgetary process. So, like, I, I understand where you guys are coming from. Personally, I, I mean, it's just, we, we have debated this, and debated this, and debated this, I appreciate you coming. Uh, but we, we go through the process for reasons, and Gloria has received tens of thousands of dollars more than she did while Doug was here. So, like, there's a significant pay increase that she's already given, and we, and we've told her many times how much we appreciate her service. So, uh, yeah, I, I just wanna make, I just wanna put that out, it's tough.
I talked with the Area Planner, I talked with Cameron on this, and he assured me that they can pay for it with, with their fees coming in, that, uh, they can pay for it within their budget now. But, as I go back and think about it, and I, I told him, I said, well, we make the budgetary decisions in August, and they're made, and I think, I, I would have to go against it. I'm not saying it's, we don't do a good job, and there's gonna be more of a challenge with Cameron out of there, but the process is there, we have forty people in the courthouse that are doing jobs that they'll be paid for more for us. I just don't think we can make it a fortune.
Could I make a motion first?
Look, I think, Tracy had a point there.
I'd like to make a motion to increase her to sixteen sixty.
Okay, so a motion by...
They will, after they do the motion, last for discussion.
Something said, I'm sorry, I haven't, I...
I just answered.
Okay, so the motion by Ethan Brown, and who seconded it? Seconded by Tracy Martin, is to increase, uh, I think that...
Administrative Assistant, line pick thirty-one.
Admin Assistant, the APC, to sixteen sixty, is that your motion?
Yes. So...
Sixteen sixty?
Yeah, sixteen, okay.
Is that correct? Okay.
So I've always advocated for this position, that I think, I, I, I don't judge on a person, I judge on the job description. And when we sat here, when we budgeted for this, we did not compare her job description to the other two office administrators. And if you sit down, and I asked all of you to read those job descriptions, and, and tell me what she was doing that the other ones were not, so my decision is always judged on those pieces of paper that say, I don't care if it was Joe Lo doing the job, or, or Jackie. Those job descriptions are not balanced, and she is paid way, she's actually paid two dollars less than what those other job descriptions say, but the duties and job descriptions are, are almost the same.
Then why is the request and the motion for a dollar more? Because that's my next question.
Because somebody, at budget time, someone said, you need to tell me you're gonna give somebody a two dollar raise. So I said, let's give her a dollar, I mean, we need to...
These individuals sat in on that budget discussion.
We need to start bumping, I mean, getting her up comparable to the job descriptions of the other office administrators. It's not about a work ethic, it's not about how she comes to work, it's about the job description, and we said at budget time that we were going to clean it up, that we were gonna give them comparable.
So we'll set, by your argument, we'll set ourselves up for the potential for a mid-cycle discussion again, because we gave her the dollar, but she really was worth two dollars, and we want that extra dollar. See, the next follow-up question is, this germane to this vote, why just a dollar? I mean, if everything is true that Brad just said, and she's so indispensable, a dollar an hour seems a little insulting then.
I...
Like, I wanna, I, I just, I wanna, I wanna flip the coin here, and look at everything that, honestly, we've already discussed, but the reality is, if she deserves two dollars, why is the motion for a dollar?
She deserves to be comparable to the other two office administrative positions. Do you know what those two other office administrators made? Did you read the job descriptions that I asked everyone to read? Did you compare them?
Well, yes.
Do you think that's a slap in her face, and so she might, and we need to retain these people on, on fair salaries? And who's to say next budget system that we looked, and we compare again, and, I mean, that was one of our goals, the budget was to get our salaries up to where as possibly we could, and to get these positions comparatively paid.
I'm happy to address this next year, that budget, but we have, we have debated this for hours.
Call for a vote.
Are you calling a question?
I mean, we have, we've talked about it so long today, so it's just a...
Yeah, so, Tracy has called for a question to limit debate, or close debate. All those, so, we're voting on closing debate. All those in favor of closing debate?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign? Six, one to close debate?
Who was the one?
Ken. Who seconded the motion to close debate?
I did.
So, debate has been closed. Nada, did you have anything on the motion? No, wait, I'm sorry, we, we closed debate for this.
Yes, I wanted to say something.
That's, it's closed. All those in favor of the motion to increase the Administrative Assistant for the APC to sixteen sixty, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, I'm not, I'm saying aye, I'm voting aye. So, three in favor, of those opposed, aye? If the motion fails, agreed.
And that would, against with Scott, and Doc, and Ken, and Josh.